We should be out of here within an hour.
You think so? I think he did.
No, I didn't.
It's 5:30.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Otomo City Council meeting. It's 5:30, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's consent agenda, Part One. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness.
Yes.
The next item is to approve our consent agenda, Part Two. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness.
Yes.
The next item is to approve tonight's city council meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness.
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is identification of citizen. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. City administrators' report to city council and citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator. Sorry about that, Phil.
No, that's okay. And as I understand, we're going to bypass the first item and try to maybe postpone that to a future meeting, which was, just for anyone who doesn't have agenda in front of them, Chief of Police was looking to award a citizen for extraordinary acts of bravery, service, et cetera. The individual wasn't, isn't able to make it here tonight, so we're going to postpone that, which brings up next Iowa Heartland History Connection. And I understand Dennis Willholt will be providing this update for us tonight.
You're not as good-looking as Aaron, just so you know.
I know, I know. Well, you got me. I'm never going away. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Dennis Willholt. I currently serve as the Wapalo County Historical Society's Vice President. I'm here to provide an update regarding Otomo's historical National Humane Alliance Fountain, located currently in Ballingall Park, which is, of course, near the depot, home of, which was home of the former Iowa Heartland History Connection Museum. This fountain is part of a remarkable legacy created by the National Humane Alliance, which was founded in 1897 by Herman Lee Enson, a successful advertising executive and early animal welfare advocate. After his death in 1899, his fortune funded the production and donation of more than 100 uniform granite fountains distributed to cities across the United States and Mexico between 1902 and 1915. The fountains, a little history lesson goes along with this time. The fountains, most weighing five tons and six feet in diameter, were carved by the Bodewell Granite Company of Vinylhaven, Maine. Cities received them at no cost, with the condition that they be placed in a prominent public location, maintained locally, and supplied with running water for the care of both working horses and smaller animals. Today, roughly 70 remain publicly viewable in Mexico and the United States. Some are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Otomo's Fountain, which is owned by the city, has occupied at least four locations since its arrival. Originally, it was at the, in the middle of Third Street, at the base of Central Park. It was also relocated to the former pedestrian mall further downtown. It was at Wildwood Park at one point, and now it currently resides in Ballingall Park. So it's been moved around a few times. During our years, our years, the museum's years, we, at the depot, we were pleased to informally steward this piece and remain committed now to its ongoing care. City staff have been working with Bridgeview Center Incorporated in preparation to relocate the fountain one more time over to the Bridgeview Campus. A concrete pad and some landscaping are already prepared, and it's right at the front, to the right of the front door of the center's main entrance there. This location provides significantly higher visibility and complements the outdoor sculpture collection, the Freedom Rock, and the surrounding gardens. Bridgeview Center, Inc., and the Wapalo County Historical Society, which, again, we operate as the Iowa Heartland History Connection Museum, are, we're collaborating as this project now moves forward. Together, our organizations will assess the condition of the fountain in preparation for a move, explore the possibility of restoring its original running water function, determine relocation costs, oversee the move, and create new interpretive signage with QR code, which will link then to the museum's website, where residents can then learn more about the National Humane Alliance and the fountains in the United States and Mexico. To complete this project and ensure the fountain's continued preservation, we anticipate seeking community volunteers and donors, and we fully accept the responsibility for coordinating these efforts. We look forward to continuing our partnership with city staff and keeping the council informed as the project progresses. Thank you very much. Or if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
At one time, there were colored lights that spewed up through the water. Are they still there and/or will they be replaced?
We're talking about a different fountain, I think. There's the main fountain in Ballingall Park, which will remain there and is part of the park. This is the Horse Fountain, the granite gray fountain. It was, it's over by, toward the east edge of the park, in the parking lot area there.
Okay, I was talking about a different, sorry.
That's okay. Anything else?
Dennis, you had said that there's already a concrete pad and some landscaping over there. Has this already been approved by the city council to actually have it moved again over to Bridgeview?
I think that, from what I understand, Bridgeview, Inc. has worked with the Parks Department and city staff to get it to the current stage where they went ahead and poured a pad of concrete and put in some bushes around to provide for the landscaping.
Because I'm not sure whether the city council's actually approved it being moved again or not. I guess I need some clarification on that.
Well, it hasn't come before the city council. The concrete pad has been poured, as was mentioned, and I think Parks worked with that. But as far as the cost of moving it, I think that would be, the next step would be to request, but you're talking about assessing the cost and potentially fundraising for that, which would take that cost off of the city. So I guess the big question prior was, why would the city pay to have it moved, you know, if it was in a place that was okay? There's a desire to have it moved and to restore it and other things, so that's a request, that's, or at least an update to that, and I'm guessing a further request would come in the future. So that would be great to have that directive, because at, to this point, I mean, there's been, I know, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Bridgeview, Inc. tonight, I'm just here as one of the partners with Bridgeview, Inc., but my understanding is that they've worked with city staff and, and abided by, you know, in terms of paying for the concrete pad and that, they approved it, you know, being located there at Bridgeview Center. So I think that maybe there's been some assumption that the city was on board. There was never a directive, to my understanding, that anyone needed to come to counsel. But as we've, the project has grown in terms of collaboration with the museum and knowing that we want to, as I said, we, we still feel a stewardship for it, because for years that is where the museum was, and people just associated it with the museum, but it was never our property. So we want to make sure, though, that the historical value of it, the fact that there are only about 70 left in the, in the Mexico and the United States, we want to make sure that as historical stewards, history stewards, we want to make sure that we preserve it. If you would like a formal request to go through the council, I'm sure that the entities can do that.
Because there's no financial aspect to it from us, do we need to approve it?
No, there is a financial aspect to move it.
Not on us? Did I misunderstand that?
No, we are, we are, you know, accepting the responsibility to raise funds, and that's certainly one of the reasons why we're here, is we don't want to raise money without talking to the people who actually own the piece. Yeah, which would be the approval, then, to move it from one site to the other. And in the past, when it's moved, it has gone through council for approval.
So what I'm hearing is that we can put it on a future agenda, then, to clean this up?
Yes. Do you want that, do you consider that you have that information now with this tonight? Or do you need something, a formula? Will the staff draft a resolution? Do we need to provide more information? Direction? Yeah, I can talk to you about that, or if there's someone else you want me to talk to and then put something together for the next meeting. We don't have it specifically on the agenda, talking about the fountain or moving the fountain, so they couldn't take action on that tonight. Right, I'm just, I'm just wondering, who needs to present that? Does Bridgeview, Inc. need to present that? Or is it in staff hands? Because I know before, projects have been presented, but staff have written the resolution to come to council. What do you want from the entities? Yeah, I'm more than happy to draft the resolution on behalf of this. We just need the verification of the cost reimbursement or picking up the cost, those things, having that in place as far as resolution, as to who would be covering it, et cetera. So do you just want my notes here? Yeah, perfect. I can work off of that. That's great.
Dennis, I just have one last question. So this statue is not on the registry, correct? And it's not part of the Ballingall being on the national, or our?
It's not a contributing element to the Ballingall.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dennis from council?
Did I misunderstand that you were going to raise the funds to do this move? Or are you expecting the city to pay some?
We are not expecting the city. We are, I think the, the question will be, when it comes to moving, are, is that an expense that we can work, an expense and a project with which we can work with the city to do it? They've done it before. Or is it because of condition or age? Do there, does it need to be a different consideration for that? So when I, when this came forward to me prior, talking with staff, the recommendation was to contract the equipment to move it from the site to Bridgeview. That city staff wouldn't. From a third party? A third party, correct. Yeah, for the insurance aspects and the, everything else. Okay.
Any other questions from council?
How soon do you think you might be doing this project?
Pardon?
How soon do you think you might be doing this project?
I think that if we were, had some action as far as, you know, have, we'd like to have the evaluation done just as quickly as possible, so that then, over the winter months, we can make the arrangements in terms of the actual move. Part of the question about, about examining it, it is seeing if, of course, is seeing how we can restore a recycling water, watering system. Because before, it's been, of course, when it was running, and there were times that it was running, I think even at Ballingall Park, if I, if I understand the history correct from people who were there, that there's a line that runs to it now. The problem was, it was just, the water went into the sewer and, and there was no recycling with it. So what we would like to examine to see if we can work to find, you know, a pump, if there's space in that, if we can make a space for it somewhere to make a recycled water fountain possible.
That makes good sense.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, hopefully, this will be on the agenda to vote on next, next council meeting on December 2nd.
December 2nd, thank you.
Phil, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, not this evening.
Okay, the next item is to identify any citizens who'd like to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. We don't have any slips up here, but sometimes people don't fill them out, so I'll ask, does anybody want to speak on any of our agenda items this evening? Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We have no ordinances tonight. The next item is departmental board or commission recommendations and reports.
Fiscal year 2026 first quarter financial report. Recommendation received fiscal year 26 first quarter financial report from Finance.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I believe Cole O'Donnell, our finance director, is going to handle this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The preliminary report was presented on October 21st. Due to timing of certain revenue disbursements, not all information is available of the month immediately following the end of the quarter. We're in time for staff to prepare a report for city council in that month. Revenues for Q1 were not fully reported in the preliminary report included local option sales tax, hotel motel, road use tax, and franchise fees. Quarterly transfers are not included in the final report, as the city council has not approved them until the next item. However, the amount to be transferred into the general fund is calculated in, in that funds revenues in order to show the true status of the general fund. Some expenses change, totals change due to invoices for purchases and work completed in Q1. Total revenues for the general fund at quarter end is $6,176,696, or 29.81% of budget. However, we do want to note that September is a high collection month for property taxes, so what you'll see is in the next couple of months, that that'll start to equalize out. What we expect is, is when we give the second quarter report, we'll have a better idea of exactly how we are doing, given at that time, we should have approximately half of, of all collections for certain revenue items. And even though there is still some fluctuations, local option, option sales tax and franchise fees tend to increase or decrease depending upon the season, so there will be some fluctuations of that. When you look at the other city taxes, they increased from $123,955, or 13.77% to $208,07, or 22.30%, with the receipt of hotel motel taxes. We did note that one item was reduced due to journal entry. Intergovernmental was reduced from $153,000 to $104,000, as two federal grant reimbursements were credited to fiscal year '26, but should have been credited to fiscal year '25. Other sources includes the Q1 transfers into the general fund totaling $1,494,793. Part of that is the franchise fees, part of it is support for our, our insurance costs and other benefits costs as well. As we go forward and with revenues, we are doing well on our investments. Currently, we're averaging over 4%, though the Fed did create, have another cut, so our high-yield savings account is now below 4%. IPAT is below 4%. What we did budget, though, is a, is interest rate at 3.5, so we're still ahead of what our, our budget projections are. But I got a feeling that the Fed will probably make another cut, which could reduce that further, but I think we can still maintain that, that 3.5% target with some of the, the long-term investments. The short-term liquidity investments, the IPAT, the savings account, those are going to fluctuate based upon what the Fed and the markets do, but right now, we're locked into some, some really good rates on our CDs. So for all funds, total revenues for Q1 are $17,172,74, or 28.30%, compared to the preliminary total of, of $16,895,205. This includes, does not include transfers, but does include the receipt of utility franchise fees of $494,536, as noted in other city taxes. Intergovernmental has a reduction due to the previous note within the general fund. Any questions on revenues before I move to expenditures? Expenditures. As with revenue, the timing of certain expenditures will cause some, some expenditures to be out of line, either over or under expectations. Overall, general fund expenditures are within, within estimates at 22.33%, or $4,548,61. To make up the budget shortfall of $469,685, total expenditures need to be 2.22% less than estimates. Quarter one appears to be on target with a difference of 2.67%, which is less than the preliminary number of 2.88, but still within target. We do have not factored in revenues as being ahead just yet. We'll look at that in the second quarter to make sure that if we're ahead in revenues and we're also ahead in expenditures, we can give a better projection of where we're going to be in quarter three or at the end of the year. As far as open positions, because what we, what we base our makeup for the deficit or the shortfall was that we would have open positions and we wouldn't fully spend what we budget for wages and salaries. Currently, we have five open positions in the general part, in the general fund department, with four positions being actively recruited for at this time. Additionally, we do have those two extra firefighter positions, and we continue to look at their salaries and wages as we go forward, but that did not change from the preliminary report. And when we get to all funds, not much has, has changed there. You know, the, the amount, percent of, of budget is right around 16% for all funds. For the general fund, the percent of budget is right around 22%. So we appear to be on target. We do have to factor in, when we go to the all funds, that we have several large capital projects out there that make up a large portion of the overall budget that have not seen expenses yet. As we move into the next construction season, when it starts in spring, you're going to see that difference be made up quickly. I'm open for questions.
Does council have any questions for Cole? I think you do bring up a good point, that expenditures and revenue both ebb and flow throughout the year, depending on certain timeframes, and it seems low at one point, then it goes high at another point, but that's just the way it works. I do think these quarterly reports are going to be very helpful for the council, and at this point, in your conclusion, you're not recommending any cut in services at this point, correct?
Not at this time.
Any questions from council?
Mr. O'Donnell, you're using the new software?
Correct.
We bought, remind me?
Well, what's that?
$120,000 well spent?
$125,000, $130,000, yeah, is what it is.
And when we input those numbers, they still need?
Analysis?
Analysis, they still need, yes.
Yeah, the, the new system, the new system really helps in pulling information out, but it's only as good as the information going in.
Right, so interpretation is still a, something you have to look at and something you have to do. And other departments have access to that, correct?
Correct, they, they can run their own reports as well, through the viewpoint website. They can pull up and they can do budget versus actual reports. They can do, they can get live updates.
I was going to say, you can do it up to the day, can't you?
Right, yeah, you can do it up to the day, so.
All right, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council for Cole? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness.
Yes.
Thank you, Cole. The next item on the agenda is our resolutions, and we have seven of those this evening.
Resolution number 195, 2025, approving MOU to current collective bargaining agreement with Otomo Association of Professional Firefighters Local 395. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 195, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I believe Barb Kocho, our HR director, is going to handle this?
Yes, thank you. So this is a memorandum of understanding that we've worked with the fire department on. What this is, is with our last contract negotiation, there were a lot of issues that we had addressed that we had realized that we were not doing correctly pertaining to overtime. With fire and police, they work very different shifts, and it's not the standard 40 hours a week they get paid overtime, anything over that 40. So the FLSA law, the Fair Labor Standards Act, puts out that there are ratios that we are to follow for police and fire when they work on a varying shift, which is what our departments do. Within that, we also have stipulations as to how we calculate what we call a regular rate, which is how we determine what an overtime rate is. So one of the things that was identified is that the fire department currently, they receive a base hourly rate for every hour that they work, but then they also receive a monthly stipend for hazmat pay, which is for, from our SERG, and then they also receive a stipend for EMT pay. And we have to calculate that into the regular rate, which then creates the overtime rate. So what this memorandum of understanding does is it takes, and we are factoring in that stipend that is guaranteed to them as long as they have that, the certifications that are required for their positions, this is now going to become part of their hourly rate, or their regular rate, which is how we then pay overtime. So we are already paying this to our firefighters. What this memorandum of understanding is doing is actually just making it part of their hourly base rate. So that way, it's paid every single time. We don't have to worry about how we calculate things, and that's what this memorandum of understanding does.
Let me just clarify to council, and correct me if I'm wrong. When you said that we weren't paying it correctly, we were paying it to the contract, so we were paying it in accordance of that, but when the contract changed, because that part wasn't being calculated correctly under federal law, that was, so we made that change in the contract, this is cleaning up that part of it, so that it will mirror what we're paying in accordance with FLSA overtime.
We have not been calculating the hazmat and the EMT pay as part of the over, the regular rate for overtime. We have not been doing that.
Right, because in the contract, it didn't have it, it had it broken out separately. This will combine that all into the one rate that then would carry forward into the future contracts. Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
I'm a little lost, but everybody's caught up, nobody's lost any pay, right?
No, what this will do, this will actually, again, it's, we're already paying it, so what it is, is it's, say, it's $100 a month for the hazmat. We've broken that out into an hourly rate, and we're going to add it on to their base rate.
So in the, in the past, they're still good, they still got?
So, you know, we're cleaning that up as far as the past. This is the first step of getting it right, so that the clock stops, so I don't have to keep doing it every two weeks and calculating it. So this is the first step of cleaning that up, is getting this MOU again, so the clock will stop as of this pay period, and then we are already working with the fire department and with our attorneys on getting that back pay to our firefighters.
So they'll still get made up for it?
Absolutely.
Okay, got you, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
So are we going through to ensure that, like, our contracts do meet the federal requirements or federal law for how different things in those union contracts should be? Are we checking, like, I, I just say that because I feel like we've had a cup, a few contract things come up saying, hey, we should have been doing it this way. So I just want to make sure that going forward, or we're reviewing them and just ensuring that that's, any other things are getting fixed. Because I know that this one's been, like, many years going, and we found it this year, correct?
No, we found this two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
And we're just, this is part of that. This is continuing that work that we're doing to make sure that our contracts are correct.
Okay.
And it'll stop the manual entry, it'll, it'll put it into?
Anonymated.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Because we've got UKG set up, this will allow us to set it up within UKG so that it will automatically automatically do that, and I don't have to manually calculate it.
So any adjustments in pay, could theoretically go back two years?
By law, it's three if it was intentional. There are certain stipulations by the laws themselves. It can go back two years, it can go back three years if it's deemed an intentional misstep.
Who would have to deem that?
That would be legal. We'd get involved with the legal department on that. Yeah, our goal is to make our employees as whole as possible.
Correct.
Absolutely. And we've got, we've had great conversations with the fire department and everything within it. Chief's been involved with those as well.
Any other questions from counsel?
Barb, is our chief salaried or hourly paid?
Our chief is salaried.
Okay. But if he gets overtime, how does that work?
As a salaried employee, you do not get overtime.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood what I read before, and I can read it again, but thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
Any other questions from counsel? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Resolution number one ninety-eight, twenty-twenty-five, designating tax increment financing for certain capital projects and economic development activities. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number one ninety-eight, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, I believe Cole Donald, our finance director, is going to handle this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the fiscal year twenty-seven through thirty-one CIP, three projects were to be funded in whole or in part by TIF revenue. In order to receive the funds, the city council must pass a resolution certifying the debt by identifying the use and requested amount. This does not commit the city council to the project, but ensures that the funds are available should the project move forward. Additionally, staff has budgeted the annual support for GOPIP to be funded through TIF as well, and we must certify that as, as a debt. The projects and amounts are as follows. Greater Atumwa Partners in Progress, sixty thousand. Airport rehabilitation of taxi lanes, seventy-five thousand, which is a grant match. Bridgeview Center roof replacement, phase two, four hundred and three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, and city's contribution to the accessible playground project of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Does counsel have any questions for Cole? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Resolution number two hundred, twenty-twenty-five, authorizing fiscal year twenty-six first quarter transfers as submitted by finance. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two hundred, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and I believe our finance director, Cole Donald, is going to handle this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, once again. We do have to present the transfers and have them approved by city council by resolution in accordance with state law. I did want to point out at least a couple of things on the transfers. You'll see at the, at the very bottom of the list, the transfer in account of Fund One Twelve Employee Benefits coming from Group Health, which is an eight-sixty internal accounting account. That is where we have our reserves for our health insurance and certain benefits. The reason why there's a transfer in, that is the amount necessary to cover one quarter of the benefits budgeted within the road use tax fund. And then also the amount necessary for our retiree insurance to cover that as well. The reason why it's coming from, from reserves is we, is we did that this time, we have a healthy reserve, we were able to do that in order to keep the overall tax levy a little bit less. In the upcoming fiscal year, we'll need to move that amount onto the levy because we're going to have to have another quarter percent of, of the road use tax paid for in some way. So that's a discussion we'll have during the budget session, but we're going to have to levy for more of the road use tax. The reason being is, is that the money we get from the state with road use tax no longer supports operations. They have, a few years back, allowed cities to levy for the benefits within the road use tax where before they didn't. It's my understanding the city at one time did levy for those, but had a healthy balance in the road use tax fund and used that to pay for more for operations and then also for some road repair as well. We're down to a point now where we will eat up the reserve balance in road use tax very quickly if we don't levy for those benefits. Again, we'll have further discussions during the budget session, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Does the half a million dollars for employee benefits also include the city's contribution to Ipers?
It, yeah, it includes, that includes everything. Well, let me see, one-twelve would be, yes, that would, because one-twelve does include all of the different benefit levies, yes.
Any questions from counsel for Cole?
Cole, just speaking of our reserve, what is our percentage of our reserve, like, is ten, twenty, just for people to know?
It will vary by fund. I can't tell you right offhand what, what road use tax is. It runs around two and a half million with a seven million dollar budget.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
That's second to the last item, Mr. O'Donnell, is the landfill and the recycle. Could you discuss that? I assume that's a quarterly payment there from landfill to recycle.
Correct. What it is, is, is the landfill supports the operations of the recycling center. Recycling does not have sufficient fees in order to be self-sufficient, so recycling supports it with a, I think it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, transfer from landfill to recycling.
Yeah, that's quarterly, well, it's a hundred and twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Just the recycle doesn't cover its own expenses, it has to be helped by landfill.
Correct.
Any other questions from counsel? On the transfers in or the transfers out? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh one, twenty-twenty-five, approving and adopting a revised building and facility security policy for the city of Atumwa. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two oh one, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
And I believe Phil, you're going to handle this one?
Yeah, thank you. One of the reasons for the renovation of City Hall was to increase facility security for employees and public assets, similar to other buildings and facilities throughout the city. Upon review of how other municipal entities address this, an outdated general facility security policy was identified. The attached policy provides an update, which outlines procedures for how the city would manage access to secure areas within municipal buildings and facilities, so it'd update what was a general policy into a more robust policy. In addition to security, policies aim to aid in limiting the spread of illness, enhancing operational efficiency, achieving regulatory compliance, and, and other items.
Counsel, have any questions for Phil?
I do. Oh, go ahead, Dan.
So this just reflects the day that we are in. You have to have more safety, and I know even churches and places like that have to be careful, and, and so it's just something, it's, it's not necessarily comfortable, it's not necessarily, it makes it easy for people, but it's just something that seems to need to be there.
Correct, and it's gone through a number of iterations. It's probably been, I want to say, three or four months in the process from the original draft to the version before you tonight, and it's, you know, like any policy, it's, especially a general policy, it's going to be, you know, in some cases, broad to cover all instances, but still, through the iterations, there was a number of things that came up from, input from staff members that had been revised in here and others that weren't included or incorporated, because looking at the, the maintenance of the security aspects, it just didn't make sense to include all of those things.
My, my issue is, we, we've never had a problem before, and when we was at the train station, when that elevator door opened, every room was open. If it wasn't, you went in and talked to whoever you had to, you didn't need an escort, and you left. You go to the courthouse every day and do the same thing. Get on the elevator, go to any, go up the stairs, go into any, if the door shut, you go in and do your business and you leave, so.
And you're talking about City Hall specifically regarding this policy?
Yes.
Yeah, and as Councilman Reed had mentioned, we're in a different day and age. It's, you know, from a security standpoint, from an access standpoint, from people in the, the public that mean no harm to those that are out to cause disruption, and, and you can go to pretty much any social media outlet and see the, the various things that are out there that just disrupt the daily business of trying to get the work of the people done.
So I would just identify, so I understand the need for a policy like this. I understand a need for locked areas, like, you know, just the public, you know, not being able to just wander, you know, they are able to go to the front desk. The, the place that I struggle with this is city staff not having access to their administration. And I know you're going to tell me that, yes, they still have access to their administration, but not in the way that they have in the past. And I think you're also going to tell me, well, not many staff are coming to the, to the city administration, you know, where they can call, there's a phone, they can schedule an appointment. But I guess what I'm going to ask is, what event occurred with city staff that has necessitated the need to have them to not have access to, access in the way where they can open a door, use their keypad to go talk to administration or stop by you? You, I guess you've always identified that you've had an open door policy, and I know you and I disagree a little bit on open door with this, and that's okay, but I guess I just want to know what event occurred. And then also, you know, we've been working really hard as a city to improve morale, and how does this build trust with our staff if we're saying, you know, authorized personnel? So, and again, I know, I understand, like, like, well, with this, actually, you or you as an administrator, can't go into the police department because you wouldn't be an authorized personnel without being escorted by someone there. But I, I mean, you know, I understand the police department having authorized personnel space only. I mean, you guys deal with a lot of different things that, you know, not everyone should have access to. I'm referring to City Hall administration specifically.
Yeah, and I think you covered a couple of things there is, you know, the open door policy, you're talking about literal versus figurative. When we're talking about open door policy, it's open lines of communication, it's not talking about if there is a, a door in the way or not. The policy says that it, open lines of communication are there, as far as if somebody has a question, they can pick up the phone, they can stop by and, and give me a call at the front desk there, and I, you know, meet them there or meet them anywhere if they, they want it to. Maybe they don't want to meet at City Hall, it's on site, or it's, it's some area where they don't want to know, anyone else to know that they're having a conversation with me. And that is all, I'm perfectly willing to do all that. One of the things also is I want to make sure that if somebody does want to have that conversation with me, and I'm assuming, I don't want to speak for the other administrative staff, but if this is the case for them as well, that I want to be able to give them my undivided attention when they're there to, to meet with me. And so having that, you know, an appointment set up ahead of time, I can make sure I'm not rushing off to another meeting, I'm not cutting their time short, I'm able to, you know, focus on whatever it is that they feel the need to want to talk about, whatever it is, and be able to give that full one-hundred percent. As you mentioned, you're right, I, I can't just go into any of the other facilities, nor do I feel that I need to. I trust the employees that they're doing their work and doing it appropriately. I don't need to do a sneak attack on them, which, you know, having access to all the other buildings, but there's also, I had put out a memo to staff and included counsel on this, talking about some of this with the policy that was going to be on the agenda tonight. There are other safety and security things. Now, not at City Hall specifically with heavy machinery or equipment that someone may not know how to use and not know how to walk around, that they could get hurt. There could be a simple medical thing, a heart attack or, or something to that effect, where if you don't know someone's in the building, you're not clearing the building properly, you know, there's other instances that, that could occur there. The other, the part where I talked about the, the maintenance of a security policy, there's a cost, but there's also the, the backside of it with, you know, let's say, the, the security access card here to swipe in to City Hall. If we don't have something like this, then, or if we're going to say for all employees, they would all need to have one of these. Other buildings within the city don't utilize these, so that we'd have to print them for them and have the access available within our system, which takes about twenty to thirty minutes depending to set up the access with other, the, the buildings that they have access to and the areas within the buildings they have access to. And then if someone is not utilizing this, because they don't use it in their daily entry and exit of the building, well, it may get lost, it may get set aside, they're not utilizing it for anything, and so now we've got a loose key that anyone else could pick up, there's no security anymore.
So let me push back on the identification badges. So those are going to be printed either way, because in the policy, it says, as a vital part of our security system, a City of Atumwa identification badge with your name, photo, and department will be issued to each employee. So they have to have it with them. They don't have to, I think it's encouraged to wear, but they have to carry it and be able to produce it on, upon request. So they're going to have it with them anyway. So the idea that an employee is going to, because they don't have to use it often, is going to just kind of, may lose it. I mean, employees who have to wear them on the daily may lose it too. So, I, I mean, I guess I'm going to push back on that. I, I struggle with that. I also heard you say the words that you trust your employees too, so again, I push back at why, why can't employees, and again, maybe only five people come in or, you know, or throughout the year, we only see twelve people, but that was twelve people who had access to their administration that maybe had, were like, driving by City Hall and was like, oh, I really want to stop in and see that, like, again, I don't know what the harm that it causes to allow an employee to have access to the building without having to be escorted. That's another problem that I'm struggling with.
So the, the thing is, when it talks about having the ID badges, there's a difference, and this is where the difference in cost comes in, between having one that's electronic or be opening doors with it versus ones that are just printed on regular card stock that don't have an electronic key to it, that don't have anything else. So anyone that doesn't have, that works in a building or facility that doesn't have an electronic key access would get the, the cheaper version with the, the name, department, and picture, because they don't need it to open anything. They can do that for, like, I don't know, probably a dollar or two versus the ones that have to have, it's a more expensive card with the electronic feature, and then the time that goes into having to program that. So that's probably about twenty-five dollars with employee time on average, maybe. So that, that's the one thing where there's, that's where the cost is. They'll have a card, it's just where does it access, or does it access anything at all? And so that's the thing. Now, if we're going to say that all employees have access to City Hall, then everyone has to have the more expensive card that also has to be programmed, and if they're not using it on the daily because they're not using it in their regular facility, then that's where that issuance could happen, where it gets lost.
And I guess I'm just going to say one more thing, because, I mean, I'm going to continue to say the same thing, that I am for this policy, I'm not for, for City Hall for access to administration, because I feel like staff should have access to administration. The other thing too, and this is maybe common sense, and I'm just not there with the, you know, sometimes I think we need to spill out common sense, but it also doesn't identify who gets to determine what an authorized area is and who doesn't. And so, again, I know that sounds like common sense, but I think that we should have common sense in things like this too, instead of just policies. And then my last comment too, under visitor management number three, it talks about to maintain a professional work environment, visitors are encouraged to refrain from long personal visits during work hours. So I just, I ask... So I just, I ask about that too, because I feel like I'm struggling to understand why that's in this policy too, because shouldn't that be for, I mean, in general, we all know that during work, you know, we have our pleasantries and stuff too, but I feel like we're calling out visitors on this too. So just going to identify that too.
I think I, this is what I've done for 30 years, and I think I kind of fall in the middle on this. I I understand the policy and I understand the need for it, because as Councilman Reed said, this this is a different day. So if it's vendors, people that don't work for the city coming in, I am all for escorting them and everything else. And I think Councilperson Galloway was too. But let let me ask a question first. The policy says anybody that has an office in the courthouse, so, I mean, just just looking over there, or City Hall, I'm sorry, if JD came, would he have to be escorted to Phil's office? Because by the way the policy reads, he would. So if Phil or Gene come to the front office, their department has.
Well, Gene, I think, would be classified as a maintenance.
Well, you see what I'm.
Yeah, no, I agree. I 100% agree with this on you.
You know, that's my question. So here's my concern. And and again, I want everybody to understand, I'm not knocking on Phil for his policies here. This is the time to bring up those questions, you know, respectfully. I do feel like our staff, you know, maybe inadvertently, I don't know, has has felt like we've built some walls, and I I kind of feel like that does build a wall. However, I understand it. But I think if we hire staff, we trust that staff with a piece of $50,000 equipment, we trust JD with a $5 million airport, but he has to be escorted to an office. We trust, you know, we we trust our, so even if you took a maintenance person, even if you took one of our general laborers, who are fantastic, by the way, we, you know, I understand, are they really a security risk? And and Phil, I think some people would avoid talking to you if they felt like they had to go through this.
I agree.
And I'm not saying that you're pushing them away on purpose, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying with with that in place, I just think if we hire staff, we should trust them. And not only that, like I said, this is what I do. If they need an escort, let's just pretend, let's just, we hope, we pray it never happens. But say somebody did want to do harm, and Chris is the one escorting them. Now, we've put her alone on a front line, you know what I mean? Like, I I think most of the security would become, you know, vetting who we do let in with with people we hire. And then with vendors and citizens, we just, then this is a great policy, you know, to keep them monitored and to keep them in.
And to clarify, this policy is across the board, so like at the airport, the police station, but I think we are specifically talking about this policy in regard, regards to City Hall.
And and I believe our employees should have access to our leadership, because honestly, if it, and I'm just going to say this, this might get me into trouble, but if it was an employee, I don't care if they come knock on my door, at my house. I mean, if they had that big of a concern or that big, but again, I'm going to end with this, I I don't think that Phil maliciously came up with this or anything like this. It just is a new day with safety. I get his concern, I, that's just my opinion, that's just that I feel like it kind of build a wall with our staff.
One of the issues I have too, also, is we're talking security here, because nowadays and all this other stuff, but our city clerk and her assistant are not trained in security, to my knowledge. We're putting them at risk, plus they have to leave their job on what we pay them for eight hours a day to do, off and on throughout the day for eight hours shift. If if someone really wants to do something, they're going to do it, whether the biggest guy in town is escorting them or not escorting them. I just don't see why it's such a, all of a sudden, boom, we got to do it now, because of today's world, when we right across the street at the courthouse, we're not doing it. And they trust us, we trust them, and there's never been an issue. So I'm not for this at all.
Well, and I think too, when you link, and again, this is what I do, and legal department have to look into it, when you link the word security with escort in the same policy, that comes with a liability of if something did happen, then they're going to say, oh, they were escorted by a clerk and not an actual security person. Now, I'm I'm going to one end of the spectrum here, because like I said, we pray nothing happens. But there is some liability to be looked at in there as well, too.
And and if we look at the definition of escort in the policy, which is defined, it just says authorized personnel, meaning somebody that is authorized in that building, responsible for supervising and accompanying a visitor of the building or facility. Okay, so it it's not meaning.
For what reason, though?
To know who's in the building and who's not, to get them from point A to point B, if they haven't been in the building before and didn't know where to go, you know, there's, you know, variety of reasons that it could be. And now to Councilman McIntyre's point, there are phones at the entrance points of City Hall that I think has limited numbers on it, you know, can't call out long distance or anything. But if you're there to see somebody, you can use that phone, and then it doesn't interrupt anyone else that they're not there to see. They want to see me, they pick up the phone, call my extension, and I can go meet them at the door and let them in and escort them back to my office.
Right, and I understand. And I, you know what, I'm not knocking you, but the, when we put escort, it's still for the reason of the security of City Hall. And I'm like saying, that's a one in a billion chance, but still, my question, if JD comes, is he escorted? Is he the only one out there that doesn't have an officer?
Yeah.
Is he escorted to an office?
Yeah, currently, I believe all supervisors, directors, clerks, and secretaries have access into the mailroom part of City Hall, which at this point would be the the rest of the administrative functions there.
So then that's actually not clarified in this, so that would need to be updated to the authorized personnel.
That was my question, yes, for department heads. That's what I was getting at, yes, thank you.
Yeah, and that's that's in the policy under, I think, the last point there about anyone else that needed access could be updated with that. Let's see. Revisions to personal access for secure areas must be approved and documented by the respect of department head and city administrator.
So what if it's one of Chief Cantor's assistant chiefs? If they come, do they need escort?
Yep, they have to be escorted.
They would, yeah, unless they were added to the the list of individuals for secure areas within the building.
I don't want to pick on you anymore by asking questions.
I would like to comment. I do not agree with this resolution. I probably will not support it. And the only time I use my passkey is to get in this building in the evening or weekend to pick up a document that I need to get out of my box, and I can certainly work around that. So I don't support this resolution at all.
So I guess I would identify, like, so it sounds like there is some work that we would like to see done, so could we table it and have some of that work done and then bring it back to us?
But before that, before we go further, what me and Councilperson Galloway is saying, 95% of this policy is good. That's, I mean, we're not disagreeing with safety or watching our vendors or or, you know, citizens coming in. We, it's the staff, so it's not the whole policy we want to take out. Obviously, there's a lot of thought put into it and for safety. And again, I I don't think it was malicious, but I do want to say one more thing and I'll shut up. It's about the key card, and we thought if somebody loses their key card, and I know this isn't going to, you know, people laugh at me for saying this, when I was at Walmart, I was, had management associates and I was in asset protection, we all had keys. I didn't punish everyone because one person lost their keys. I directed the direction, you know, so if somebody does lose their card, then we need, I don't want to use the word punish, but let's take care of the people who lose their card. You see what I'm saying? Let's take care of it that way. And but I think I know where she's going, maybe we do need more discussion on the the 5% that we need to look at.
No, I can motion to table it.
She can.
I can motion, so I will motion to table.
There's my motion.
Second.
Hang on just a second. That's okay. So you, so I have Cara first and Doug seconded?
Yep.
To table.
Okay, motion to table, resolution 201, 2025.
Take the vote.
There, are you guys ready?
Yep.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Galloway?
Yes.
Councilman Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilman McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilman Kavanis?
No.
Are we ready to move on?
Resolution number 202, 2025, authorizing the mayor to sign a street lighting resolution for Alliant Energy to remove a street light for the Market Street Inclusive Place Space project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 202, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And our Public Works Director, Philip Bergmeyer, is going to handle this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this street light is at the entrance to the parking lot of Market Street Bridge, where the inclusive playface, playspace is going to be. And it's a land-owned pole, which means Alliant owns the pole, they own the light, we pay them a monthly fee to maintain it and light it for us. In order to remove this pole for that project, we need to pass a resolution removing it from the the list of poles they maintain. So that's what this resolution does. And then, just so you know, we are going to put a new light in as part of the inclusive playspace that'll be wired from the playspace itself. So the light will be coming back, it's just going to be our light now, not Alliant's.
It'll be the city, the new light will be the city's, not Alliant's.
Yeah, it's going to be wired into the the rest of the lights for the playspace, but this particular light's owned by Alliant, so we have to pass a resolution to get it off their their list of maintained streetlights.
Council, have any questions for Philip? I think it's pretty straightforward. If there's no questions or comments, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Resolution number 203, 2025, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the 2021 sanitary utility access program. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 203, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergmeyer, this one's yours too.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this is obviously a really old program that got left open, just some background of how this happened. So there was one manhole left on this list that was on Center Avenue, and we were trying to separate out divisions two and three for sewer separation, deciding where the boundaries were going to be. And we told the contractor to hold off for a while until we figured out where this was going. And I guess, once we figured out that this manhole is going to be in division, or in the Phase Eight Sewer Separation Project, we forgot to call them back and tell them that the contract needed closed out, we weren't going to do it anymore. And honestly, the contractor forgot about it too. And so this will only, there's no new spending on this, it just pays them their retainage and closes the contract out. So the contract, original contract amount was $49,800, change order number one associated with this final payout decreases that amount by $20,499.43 for a new contract amount of $29,357. And with less than previous payments, the final amount due is $1,598.10.
Which is still owed to them, correct?
Yes, the retainage, basically, from the the one, the manholes they already installed.
Any questions from council? Because we have a real similar one after this for 2022.
It's a similar story, but I'll.
Yeah.
Go for that, with that one.
Any questions from council? If not, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Resolution number 204, 2025, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the 2022 sanitary utility access program. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 204, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergmeyer.
All right, similar story on this one, but this manhole was on Second Street, and we were going to close part of Second Street to do some levy work, ended up not doing that levy project. So we didn't want to close Second Street down just to replace this manhole or just add this manhole. And again, the contractor got busy with their projects and our inspectors no longer, we had a lot of turnover this time, and inspector forgot about it, the contractor forgot about it, and we were looking back through old projects and realized this one hadn't been closed out yet. So again, the final amount here due is $22,536.52. It's not for any extra work, it's just paying the retainage from the work they already completed on the project. So they'll close this project out as well.
Does this program still exist, or are these two programs, that once these final payments are made, they're done?
Yeah, so we, we used to have a annual program for for sanitary, sanitary utility accesses. In the current budget and future budgets, I've combined all these separate sanitary access programs and manhole program, or sorry, in the catch basin programs and spot repair programs into just one budget item. That way, you're not having this much on this one, this much on this one. If you have a lot of manholes to do one year, you can spend more on that. It's a lot more flexible, but it's a similar amount of money, but just rolled up into like a sewer maintenance budget item. So there's no longer the specific program out there.
Any questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. The next item on our agenda is where I ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak on any non-agenda items this evening. Okay, the next item is mayor or city council report or communications to the general public. Does anybody have any comments or announcements?
I just want to remind everyone that a very merry Main Street is happening on Thursday, November 20th, from 4:00 to 7:30, and it's the perfect evening to start your holiday shopping and enjoy the festive atmosphere. So there's carriage rides, the stores will be open late on Main Street, there will be a few pop-ups. So it's always, Santa will be there. So it's a great time. I encourage you all to go down there, take your kiddos. It looks like it may be cool, but not too cold, so it's been better than last year, where I think we were very cold. So it's a great time to get out and really see what we have to offer down on Main Street.
Kind of to piggyback on that, also, the Friday after Thanksgiving, Main Street has their Tree of Love celebration, where they have the Christmas trees and people have decorated them in memory of of their loved ones. So that'll be, I believe, at 5:30, isn't it, Chris? The Friday after Thanksgiving, so that's another good event for the public to attend.
And also, don't forget, on the day before Thanksgiving, the holiday train is coming, 10 o'clock?
Yep.
10 o'clock with Smash Mouth performing, so if you're from my generation, it's really cool, so.
And it's over by the railroad depot across from Kohl's, so there's limited parking, so 1015 Transit was very willing to provide free shuttle service this year to shuttle people from the backside of the mall parking lot behind the Herberger Building to and from the event. So there's really limited parking, they don't want people parking on the highway. So there's going to be free shuttle service for that event, starting at 8:30 that morning. So we really hope a lot of people will come out. This is the fourth year in a row that the Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railroad has had a TUMW as a stop for their holiday train, so we hope it will continue to be an ongoing event every year. It's a good event, and like Cara said, Smash Mouth is real popular with a lot of people, so we anticipate hopefully a maybe even a larger crowd this year than what we've normally had in the past, so.
And it is a food drive for our local food bank, so bring a few cans or boxes, bring some food.
Any other communications?
Your Honor, this afternoon, I advised the Water Works that the meter sewer fee was pushed back till July this next year.
I'm sorry, Keith, could you repeat that?
I advised the Water Works that the meter and sewer fee that we had contemplated to go into effect the first of this year has now been pushed back to July next year.
Correct.
Any other comments or announcements from council? Any other comments or announcements from counsel? Okay.
Mayor, I would like to remove the item from the table for discussion tonight.
Did you not put that in the motion?
I motioned, I motioned. That's what I said. I motioned in my head, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Then, Mayor, may I just take it over? I forgot, people might want to know what I moved.
Resolution number 140, 2025, establishing policy related to process and procedures for requesting proclamations of the mayor or city council. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 140, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation. Now, would you like to speak?
Yes, so I would actually like, I would encourage the city council to actually vote this down tonight and rewrite the policy where it identifies city council and change it to mayoral. So it would be mayoral proclamation requests, and then they would be proclamations by the mayor. However, so having the same guidelines where they're tied to certain events as we identified in here. And then I would also identify one change, and it says like, the city council reserves the right to legislatively adopt or deny any proclamation request. I would like to change that to the mayor reserves the right to deny any proclamation request that does not meet the above, which are the guidelines for the request. I have it written for you. So that's what I would like to see, is that the problem, this be voted down, and then we vote to put this in the mayoral hands.
Does anybody have any other comments?
Does that not have to be put on an agenda, as a rewrite?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's what I would like to see, so vote it down, and then I'll hand this to Chris to see.
Okay.
And I agree with that idea. I think that's in keeping with the way proclamations should be done.
My two cents, I know we'll vote it down, but I shouldn't be transparent to people, know where I stand. Many, many, many people have approached me, and they still want counsel to have some input. So I'm for discussing it, I'm for you tabling it, but I just, that's where I stand.
I'm not asking to table, I'm asking to vote it down and then bring this back to counsel.
You used the wrong word, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Any other comments from counsel?
So how's the proclamation going to be worded then, so?
I'll hand this to Chris, and then she'll bring it-
Well, I'm not talking about the new one, I'm talking about now.
So you guys are voting on right now to approve it as it was presented to you originally? Or not approve it? So yes or no to that vote?
So really, there's no changes being made right now?
No, I'm just suggesting, I just wanted to put it out there. I'm requesting that we turn it down, but then give the same expectations that we identified as a council that were important, but put it in the mayor's hand to follow those expectations that were identified as a council.
Is everybody clear on what's going to be voted on?
Ten, four. Ten, four.
Clear as mud?
Ten, four.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Galloway?
No.
Councilmember Hoffman?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Kavanis?
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Okay, so the motion fails, and it looks like it'll be another agenda item for the December 2nd council meeting. Is there any other communications? Anything else that needs to come before the council tonight? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending our TUMW city council meeting tonight, and best wishes for happy Thanksgiving next week.